Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council. Today is June 4th, 2019. I'd like to take a moment to ask everyone to please silence all electronic devices. And this time we turn to Councilmember Butler for tonight's invocation.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this very special time of year when the weather is obliging to outdoor activities and our neighbors and friends are about. It's wonderful to experience all the many joyous events throughout our community. This is the time of year that many are graduating and transitioning to the next phase of life, and many are getting married, new families are forming, and others are planning or embarking on vacations. For all of these special moments, Lord, we pause to remember that without you, these things would not be possible. Thank you for the joys that you provide each and every one of us every day of our lives. As we begin tonight's meeting, we ask for your guidance in the decisions that we make. There are many issues that are before us on a daily basis, and it's difficult oftentimes to find the resources to handle them all. You are the great Provider, and we trust you will lead us in prioritizing our needs and guide us to the necessary resources to accomplish the works of your will. We ask that you bless this council with knowledge and wisdom to make correct decisions. We ask that you bless our staff and those that support and implement our policies and our body of work each and every day. We ask that you bless each and every person impacted by the very decisions that we made. We remember that through you, all things were possible. In your name we pray. Amen.
We are honored to welcome back Mr. Christopher Tate with the Amateur Radio Club to speak about their field day. Welcome back. We missed you last year.
Thank you very much. It's good to be back. It's been a whirlwind year for me up at Penn State, but I've enjoyed my time up there this past year, and it's definitely good to be back. Although I would definitely take Pennsylvania's weather, mid-seventies today compared to the rainstorm here. According to my watch, it is June. That means it's field day time, why I usually show up here. This year, field day, as always, for a full weekend of June. This year, that is Saturday, June 22nd, and Sunday, June 23rd. The times, of course, have not changed, 2:00 p.m., running through the overnight hours till 2:00 p.m. on Sunday. This year, we are changing the location. In years past, the folks over at the Allenz County EOC have been gracious to allow us to use some of their apartment lot and a couple of their facilities. This year, we decided to change things up a little bit. We'll be at the Burlington Police and Fire Training Center. That's at 128 Quarry Road over in Haw River. It's just a little bit further east on 70. Field day is still the pinnacle emergency preparedness exercise for amateur radio operators. Some of us do handle it as a contest. The club I participated with up at Penn State last year did very much have a contesting aspect to their operation. But ours is a little bit more laid back. We make sure that we are able to exchange as many digital and vocal messages with other amateur radio stations around the state and around the region as we can in those 24 hours so that we are best prepared to exchange vital information in mass amount quickly and accurately. It's also a great opportunity for us to meet the public. Field day is a public event, so all members of the public that are here and attend it are most certainly welcome to come see our operation, explore what ham radio can offer you in an emergency, and we even have a radio station specially set up that members of the public can try their hand at radio, see how far across the country you can get without needing a cell tower or the Internet. Tin cans would strain, none of that. All goes through the atmosphere. It's awesome. It's fine. So once again, field day is June 22nd and June 23rd from 2:00 p.m. Saturday till 2:00 p.m. on Sunday at 128 Quarry Road in Haw River. Look forward to seeing all of you councilmembers and the general public. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Good to have you back. At this time, we have a special presentation to council on behalf of the New League Society. At this time, I'd like to call for Mr. Rhett Davis and Ms. Janice Burgess.
Good evening, council. Happy belated birthday. A year and a half ago, we picked out your present. It's taken us a year and a half to get it wrapped, and we finally delivered it about two weeks ago. We had to go through a lot of hoops to get it done, but have wonderful partners to work with, starting with the city of Burlington. First part of your present, we get two presents. One of them is the Island and Webb Avenue behind the police station. The city demoed that for us and worked with DOT and the city. All that concrete was taken up, the drains fixed, and we replanted that to one of our landscape projects. The second project is the landscaping of the two underpasses, which the first one is completed there. That is the Church Street Underpass. We've worked on both sides, and the next one has already been contracted out, and that's going to be the Fisher Street Underpass. DOT took all the brush and material off of it, and we're here. This is Church Street right here on both sides. We are so fortunate, we've got a very good relationship with the North Carolina Railroad now, and of course, we were reminded years ago that the railroad is only interested in two things, Harold, and that's moving freight and moving people, and landscape is not. But they've been, I think we won some roundy points with the trestle in Glen Raven, in the way it turned out, and what a great project that was. So with that track record, they've allowed us to do this, and so we have finished this project. Living Landscapes was our contractor for this one, and we're going to be moving down to Fisher Street here in the next few weeks. That's all the memo. DOT did that for us, what a great relationship, to be able to work on the right way, which they don't really like people on the right way. But like I said, it's all about relationships, and we're just fortunate. This is something we wanted to do for you for your 125th birthday. I'm sorry that it is late in delivery, but the weather held us up somewhat, and we're getting all the permissions and working people working together. It's there. We're excited to give it to you. We'll maintain it for two years, replace anything that dies, we'll keep it watered, and we'll keep it mulched and groomed for you for two years and give you another gift to the city. We're very happy to do this, and we're excited about it. I think it's part of our downtown commitment, our commitment to downtown for beautification and part of revitalization of downtown Burlington. Janice, I believe gave us some brochures on our Arboretum project, which is now moving forward again. I have another brochure, and I apologize if I bring it to you, but we have planted, I think it's 14,000 trees and shrubs. This is our birthday. We are 10 years old last year, and we have planted 14,000 trees and shrubs, and most of them have gone in the Burlington area, so we're real proud of that. So I just want to say happy birthday to you. I apologize for giving the presents to you a little late, and I hope that you'll enjoy it for years to come. Thank you.
Rhett, why don't you and Janice speak to council briefly about your new employee working at the Arboretum?
About the new employee?
Yes, your new project manager.
Oh, new project manager, okay. Well, there's a lot of moving parts to the Arboretum, and most of it at this point involves engineers, both civil engineers and structural engineers, and they speak the language Rhett doesn't. Rhett doesn't know much about what has to be stamped in letters, so when we get into the technicalities of this, we begin to back off. You know, I can tell you a red oak from a white oak, a chestnut oak from an overcup oak, but when it comes to reading maps, especially engineer maps, I don't clue. We are fortunate that we have, we are taking on, or he's agreed to help us, is Jim Lawrence. I think you know his history here with the city, excellent track record, and very well respected within the city and in the community and with contractors and engineers. So he is going to be our new liaison and project manager to help us through this project with sidewalks, the new bridges and everything. So he can speak the language, he knows what needs to be done, he knows who's pushing to push and can take care of things. So we're excited that Jim has joined us, and I think this is a great compliment to our project. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you. It looks beautiful.
Oh, you're welcome.
People have made comments about it, and we greatly appreciate it.
Well, we're behind schedule because of weather. I think you know that, and I think everybody's controlled by the weather. We're moving ahead a stride, and we're excited, and the addition of Jim will help speed things up.
I appreciate the education on those underpasses. We don't normally think about underpasses in the history of the community, but those we've got prior to World War II, and that have been a part of our community for more than half of our history.
Yeah, and I remember when we moved here in '86, there was still a cold dump up there by Newland Hardware, and kudzu all over the place. Well, I remember working with maybe Jeff, they sprayed the kudzu out, and there was a toilet under the kudzu up there, and that was our, I guess, beautification at that time, but there was. Somebody, I guess, came and, oh, that's the Red Rock Track that didn't bug, but it does add a lot. We get more complaints about Webb Avenue than any other street in the city about what can you do, what can you make to look good for yourself. And as the downtown's changing and revitalizing, I think this is just a nice, they dovetail together very well. We're just glad to be a partner, and we appreciate this partnership. You are our biggest partner. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we recognize the inner city clerk.
As a council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask that there is potential conflict in tonight's agenda items.
Before council, our minutes from the March 4th, 2019 work session, do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes have been approved. Next is an add-on to our consent agenda, item C, to set a date of public hearing to renew Maple Avenue corridor plan. Do I hear a motion to approve this add-on to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has been approved. Next is our agenda, including the add-on item. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda with the addition?
Make a motion to adopt the agenda with the add-on request.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's been approved. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A to adopt a resolution setting a date of public hearing for June 18th, 2019 to consider the 3530 Harris Road contiguous voluntary annexation. Item B to adopt a banking resolution with American National Bank, authorizing the city manager, director of finance and risk management, and accounting treasury manager has signed on the account. Item C to set a date of public hearing for June 18th, 2019 to receive community input on the draft for new Maple Avenue corridor plan. Do I hear a motion to approve the foregoing consent agendas?
We approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion's been approved. We have two public hearings this evening. Item one, a public hearing has been set to consider adoption of the proposed fiscal year 2019-2020 budget, including changes in inspection fees and water and sewer rates, and the adoption of the community development budget. This time, we recognize city manager, Harden Martin.
I will, this is going to sound very similar to what we talked about at the work session a few months later, shorting the level of the presentation. So what I want to do tonight is share the highlights of the FY 1920 proposed by document. And I do also make reference, council members, you have received this notebook that has obviously been more detailed than what you saw in the PowerPoint just now, and that would be the document that you would vote on this evening. So this year, we had a handful of challenges and opportunities that sort of set the course for our budget work. Obviously, one of our goals is to balance with no property tax rate increase, and it's not surprising to anyone. We also want to obviously do that while maintaining the same level of service for our citizens. Inflation is always a concern for us, just cost of everything increases constantly, the prices that we buy, that's always something that's on our minds. We also have increasing costs of our personnel expenses, health insurance, our marriage increasing, and our retirement system, all solid increases this year, how do we have a price tag in future days? So another of our challenges was how do we proactively maintain our city facilities, how do we replace our aging equipment, how do we replace our aging fleet? And those are obviously some of the big tickets, and our goal obviously is to try to stay ahead of that as best we can. If we struggle with that each year, how are we going to take care of all the needs we have for things that are just running out? Sales tax growth and reliability this year is very strong. We felt comfortable in doing some projections in that arena. We're very appreciative of the letter, such as current sales tax structure that has been a positive for us, and we think the budget team believes it will continue to strong retail economy, and then regulatory changes that we'll continue to feel good about that. That's fueling our major revenue growth in the budget this year. So additional challenges is how do we provide for our merit-based pay adjustments, which we like to try to do for our employee team? And then we also had implementation of year three of three of the payday classification study that's done by the P. Moncrief Regional Council of Governments. And we divided our employed workforce into three groups, and this was the third group on a three-year cycle, and so we want to fund those recommendations to get our, to keep our pay in a market where it needs to be in the market in our region. And then one of the additional challenges and opportunities is we have an increase, proposed an increase in our building permit rates that's included in your notebook to offset the annual costs of purchasing a Smart Gov software package, which is a real service improvement for all the folks that utilize our development services. And what we try to do is set those fees in the inspection program such that we'll recoup the $70,000 that will cost us each year for software maintenance and updates and that sort of thing. So that went offsets. We do believe there is a direct benefit to users of that system that offset the system. It's unusual that we find an opportunity to do that where we can charge a certain exact fee for the user, so this one, we feel good about that. Additional challenges, we have four new positions that made it through the process this year. One is in sanitation, one of our direct service positions. It's a sanitation equipment operator, three position. I think council will remember from the work session, a fellow works director was able to find additional savings and/or cuts to offset the cost of this one, so this was a net low increase for this position based on some other cuts and savings. Recreation, we are adding a recreational horticulture specialist in this fiscal year. It happens to be dedicated to taking care of Little Brook Arboretum, so we will have a person that has some horticultural skills that we just don't have on our team at this moment that will be focused at Little Brook Arboretum. And then finally, we have a position, economic development project manager in the economic development department, as I shared with you in Bernard and us last week, last month's presentation, with all the big projects that we have come in, all the big things that we're working on, we feel like we need some additional resources here. I just have to remind everybody, council superintendent, these are all of our city departments that are excluded in the general fund. Some of the highlights of the budget this year. Proposed budget is $59,297,140. Again, no property tax increase. We propose the same tax rate, .5973 for 100 evaluation. Funding increase for our health insurance this year is around $400,000. We're mandated by the state for a retirement system increase. That nets about $331,000 for us this year. We'll see a similar number like that over the next two years. It's already been announced by the state. Merit salary adjustments are around 2%. We have the three new positions I just mentioned. We have a capital replacement and approval program, trying to stay ahead, and then our Link Transit subsidy increases this year due to the end of a state grant that we're doing extending. That's about $150,000. So on the revenue side, as I mentioned, we do have some growth in projected property tax revenue. That's mostly due to new development that's happened in the community. We have growth in our projected sales tax revenues, as I said, due to consumer activity, and then we mentioned, I've already mentioned, the building permit. Some of that is, we have some of those fees going up, some of that projection is increasing due to the economy, which is our obvious building permits, and then that $70,000 is to offset the purchase of this Smart Gov software. On our expenditure side, the challenge that we lay out to our department heads each year, and we commend them for working with us and helping us get to this number, we ask them to submit a limited budget that if they propose a new item or a new program, we ask them to bring a corresponding cut of some sort in their area or some sort of revenue enhancement. Obviously, the inspections item is a good example of bringing a revenue item to help offset that. And again, I'll just be repetitive on the same increases here that we proposed. We've got to make some service contracts that I haven't mentioned already, and then setting aside some funding for pitching liability funding in the future, and then obviously utilities constantly is increasing for us. So our emphasis, obviously, we want to provide great day-to-day services across the city, and that means different things in different departments, but we are focused on that and want to make sure we provide adequate budget to do so. The other things we're focused on this year is improving our neighborhoods and commitment to that, and there's a lot of different ways that we do that. Council's familiar with these. Our community improvement program is our proactive community codes enforcement program. We've kicked off the youth solutions coordinator, and you met Vanessa D, who started in May of 2019, that will be making that program very active coming into next year. We have some direct service staff added, as I mentioned, in sanitation and our maintenance. We have some incredible economic development momentum, the Anthony Road site, site number two, site number three is on our horizon, the Western Electric, you know, sort of trying to bring that plan to life that the AIA expert team put together for us. We have a renewed Maple Avenue corridor study, which council heard the detailed presentation last night, and then our handful of downtown initiatives, including developmental finance concepts that could come from school to government. In policing strategies, we maintain our national accreditation standards. We work really hard to stay connected in the community. We have a robust training program. We have great equipment, and so all of that obviously comes with a price tag, and that shows a new budget as well. Everyone's excited. Our new animal shelter, the construction is progressing nicely. We're on schedule, and council, just sort of reminder, once the new building is done, we'll move out of the old building and the new building and operate in the new building, and then the construction company will move towards renovating the old building, and that's complete, we'll have the whole thing operational. And then finally, Burlington Connected, as everybody knows, is a way we try to make sure we take it to our citizens and find ways for people to give off to us that need attention. Here are some of the major infrastructure and capital items in the budget. A small garbage truck, it's a rear loader, we have a side loader truck for needs replacement. We have 50% of the cost of a fire truck. We'll handle the other 50% of that in the next fiscal year, which is a long lead time that we're required to do that. We have 14 police cars in the budget. We have $900,000 for street resurfacing. We have various computer hardware around the city, $428,000. We are working with Greensboro and have a partnership, a deal of $250,000 for each for us and Greensboro to run a fiber connection that'll connect downtown Greensboro to downtown Burlington. We're real excited about that for some interoperability and think of some other things that can happen over time. Fairchild Stadium, it's both an athletic stadium, but at Fairchild Park, we're regrading the outfield in the next season out in Wright Field. It has some problems, and we're trying to get that in the shape that it should be looking to the future, and then we're adding a new roof at the Fairchild recreation center. Here's the overall budget in total. As you see, obviously, we're trying to have a balanced budget, so you see the revenues and expenditures are balanced, $59,297,140. Those are the various categories. On the left, revenue, on the right, you see all of our city function areas. And here's that same bit of information displayed in a graph, in a pie chart. You see sales tax at the top there, in Aqua, $13, a little over $13.8 million. Real property taxes in the Lavender, $26.5 million, and then our state share taxes is the purple. Those are our three largest categories. That's about $5.7 million. General fund revenue sources, and this is provided as well to get a little more detail about what those various sources are. That's how that looks like in a pie chart. And you see that to the left, our department is in Lavender, $8.8 million. Public Works in the dark red is about $8.7 million. Recreation, $7.1 million in the light purple, and then police in the aqua below at about $16.9. Those are our four largest departments. Transitioning from general fund now to talk about Water Resources Fund. We have the six categories in Water Resources Fund, repair and destruction, plants and facilities, laboratories, composting, customer service, billing, and debt service. The proposed budget in Water Resources is $30, little over $30 million, $30,618,899. That's a 2% increase proposed in the water sewer rates. That helps us offset our inflationary increases and allows some continued capital improvements. Our average residential population is seeing an increase of about $0.90 a month. That's for someone using 5,000 gallons of water. Proposed budget in Water Resources contains funding for employee health insurance, our O-Cub funding, and mandated return contribution to the businesses. Some of the key expenditures, we did fund all the capital requests requested by Water Resources, funded at 100%. One of our major efforts this year will be automated meter reading project. Council heard some about that a month or two ago. We're also going to kick off a water sewer master plan, and we have a handful of replacement So the projects, as we mentioned, the Threeson Road Truck Shop has a water line replacement in Little Allenz Creek. We have some implosion infiltration reduction, two-inch water line replacements, replacing some sodium hypochlorite tanks, regrouping some buildings, patching and resurfacing roads within our various facilities and plants, and then a handful of items related to the Zimpro boiler. So here's the overall showing, this budget is balanced at $30,618,899. Obviously, revenue's on the left and expenditures on the right by category or facility. Pie chart for the Water Resources Fund, we see the top left, our water rents are $11.5 million, and then sewer rents are in the purple, down at the bottom is about $16.6 million. Expenditure side of Water Resources, I'll highlight the three largest categories to the left, sewer. Expenditures are about $8.389 million. The water and sewer shared resources, where we're combining water and sewer, $9.7 million, and then just water direct expenses is $8.5 million. Again, mentioning water sewer rates, we're proposing a 2% increase. That nets about $0.2 cents a day for a 2,500 gallon a month user, and about $0.3 cents a day for a 5,000 gallon a month user. Let me transition now to Transportation Fund. Before I jump into that, I will remind everyone, this is a fair free week for League Transit to celebrate our third anniversary, so if somebody wants to try out Link or see what it's like, or try a route they haven't, for the rest of this week, they can do that for no charge, and our transportation team would encourage everyone to take a chance to get out there and check on that. It's a major success, as you all know, across the city. We've had over 250,000 riders in the first three years. Just to remind the goal, Mike Dunn does not like it when I speak about this subject if I don't say the goal is to be clean, be safe, and be on time. That's the mantra, and we do all three of those things. What you'll see this year is there's funding of about $407,000 for operations from the city general fund. We have a one-time capital expense for $250,000, which is for sidewalks and shelters. The proposed overall budget for transportation is $2.1 million. Reminder that we get 80% reimbursement for capital items from the federal government, 50% reimbursement for operations. We also have a handful of partners that continue to help us with the expenses, trying to develop the infrastructure to approach those. Stormwater fund, no change proposed in that rate, but again, separate fund from the others we've mentioned. The rate is $5 a month, and we have about 22,500 customers. That budget proposed this year is about $1.0 million. Stormwater highlights, obviously, we're trying to reduce the discharge of pollutants. We're trying to keep an eye on illicit discharge. We do a public outreach and education program, and we try to assist residents with drainage and flooding problems all around the city. So here are the remaining funds that we have in the city. Controlled Substance Abuse Fund, RICO, General Capital Reserve, MPO Transportation, Gelford McIntosh Water Capital Reserve, Sewer Capital Reserve, Municipal Service District, which is how we fund the city, the rehab loan fund, the rental rehab loan program, CBGT program, and the home program. You'll see there's an asterisk there, and we're still waiting on some confirmation from the federal government and other agencies, but those are our best estimates at this point in time. So let me just wrap up, share just a few things. I think as the budget team, we actually sort of started the process with these things on our mind, and we sort of ended, and these things are still on our mind, the things that we want to talk about over the next year. But there's some long-term fundamentals that we're trying to think about and be aware of. We're, as I mentioned a moment ago, we're starting some contributions for the first time out of our general fund to begin to take care of our long-term liabilities related to pension benefits, and that's funding for what's available in local government retirement system that has a bond rating impact, and if we show up credit rating analysts at some point in the future, if we end up in the bond market, they will appreciate the fact that we are making contributions from our general fund to help offset that liability. So this year, we have budget money from general fund, there's budget money from the water fund that will go into a pot to begin to set aside some money for our future liabilities related to debt. We also want to find ways to establish other target reserves, as we have time, obviously, there's so many demands operationally and capital-wise, it's hard to do that, but it's something in mind of our budget team is, how can we find other ways to begin to set aside some funds for the things we know we have coming in the future? We have made it a practice that we talk about financial sustainability of all our departments, our department heads will tell you, they're probably tired of hearing that speech. For me, it has become part of our everyday conversation, and it's about controlling expenses, but it's also more than that. Are there opportunities to how we can do things different? Can we retool? Can we find revenue sources we haven't been into before? Are there lines of things that we can do that bring in revenue that offsets some of our expenses? So that is something we talk about a lot, and I think that's going to be happening now. now, and just all across the state, probably all across the country, from municipalities and for county government, it's getting harder and harder to figure out how to sustain ourselves with the rising costs that we see in various areas of budgets. We have some new pay-per-view components that are developed in conjunction with the Pima Tri-Regional Council of Governments, that's the largest overall component of our budget, and we feel like some of the things that we're putting into place are definitely going to help us on the long-term, on the long-term fundamental side, which is sort of getting a hold of and gaining control of our expenses, continuing to rise each year. There's a lot of detail around that, there are some big concepts, and there are some small things we're doing as well. And then capital improvement project planning is also important, we're constantly looking forward, I know that's very, very important to the council. We envision over the next 12 months having lots of conversations with you. We obviously have said before, we want to engage our folks over at Davenport, who's our independent financial advisor, to begin to help us start thinking about what capital management may look like, and what's the best way to put together a plan of finance for some of the big picture things the council has designated as priorities. We also, one of the things that is very, very important, I know it's on everybody's mind, that as we tackle new things, what does that do to our operational expenses, right? So how do you calculate that as you think about these projects? I know that's something that's important to council members, and we want to be focused on that. A couple of the biggest things at the top of your list, this is no surprise to any of you, is the Western Rent Center and police stations, so there'll be a lot of conversation over the next 12 months or so about how we get a plan of finance together for those two programs. So finally, just as we continue to look forward, and this is, some of this is thinking more about the operations side of the house, but we want something I want to spend some time on next year is looking at priority-based budgeting and some of those, at the minimum, get some of those principles in place and in our minds to try to help us stretch the dollars as best we can. One of the ideas we're going to look at as well is program-based, we'll have an equal preparation in parks, so we can kind of have a better idea about each individual program. We're going to evaluate our service delivery partnerships with the area governments, we've had some success in that in the past year, we're working in agreement with the county and animal services operations is one example of that, and I know we've got a couple of cities that are interested in some partnerships on some other services that we haven't quite ironed out yet, but you'll hear more about that too, trying to figure out. We are certain this function is a region, you know, here, and we don't have to always be so particular about our city members. And then finally, I think, again, back to utilizing Davenport and get their help to write and adopt some fiscal policies to help us put ourselves in the best posture for a future rating analyst. They scrutinize, if you haven't been through that process, they scrutinize everything that you do, we want to be ready for that well and things. So that wraps up my remarks. I want to thank our budget team, Peggy Reese, as you know, and Tom Instrak, who leads us through the process, Nolan Kirkman, Rachel Kelly, Chad Smaller, and the rest of our budget team, and we've logged lots of hours, they've done a great job getting us to this point this evening. Finance stuff, finance staff who supplies tons and tons of data for us and kind of keeps the ship afloat while we're all working on budget, and then all our city departments for their role in helping us figure out how to balance this and how to use each dollar in the most viable way, I want to think that the entire group. Thank you for our elected officials for your constant guidance and your openness to new ideas and doing things differently from time to time. And with that, I'm going to yield the floor back to you for your public comments, how do you have to take questions from council members and indoor public members that you recognize.
Excellent, thank you, Mayor. Any questions from council before we begin the public hearing? This is a public hearing, if anyone on this side of the room would like to speak at this Anyone on this side of the room? Do I hear a motion from council to close the public hearing?
I'll move to second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed, public hearing is now closed. Do I have any questions from council, or do I hear a motion?
I'd just like to make a couple of comments from good mayor. First of all, thanks to the public who was involved in this process, government, the city staff, and preparation and announcement of the budget, for all of you guys who set through all of this, on a special basis to get to where we are. I think what Harden mentioned, I think we said, first of all, we need a big thanks to our local business community, no matter what type of size of business, our citizens who supported those local businesses, and our development community who's helped us in terms of expanding our tax base. We're talking about $60 million for general fund budgeting. Two key areas that we had to grow, have to grow in to be able to maintain that is you got to grow your tax base, and you got to rely on the sales tax. And that goes back, frankly, to the private sector, and sometimes I don't think we thank them for investing their money in businesses here that helps us generate that revenue that's so essential to our general operation. Also, I think we need to recognize our state elected officials. I don't recall in municipal while, but in one year, that Senator Red Gun, our House Member Steve Ross, and House Member Dennis Rydell have worked with us more closely in continuing to help us prosper as a community, and it's, sometimes we can always find fault in people. I think it's time to recognize them, because they've been really a big partner of us throughout this year. Finally, as a community and as elected board, we continue to discuss some of the issues that Harden mentioned, some intriguing projects which many believe could be substantial benefit to a number of our residents in our city. Decisions on these projects will not be easily made primarily because of political financial investment which can be required of citizens to make this work. These discussions will continue over a period of time, and I would urge our citizens to take part in those discussions and provide input as we continue to try to strategically map where this community is going over the next 10 to 15 years. Many of these projects will require substantial capital investment, that's a question, and how we pay for it, obviously, multiple ways, financing, one thing certainly we need to look at. But the reality of it is, it comes back, tax base grew this year a point of 7.4 or 7% to be able to afford this budget as we sit here today on the general fund side. You know, is tax basing the greatest percentage of the year? I wish it was, but I don't think it will be. So we really have to look at some of these really interesting projects that's being discussed and see how they might be implemented, and I think, before we get too far along in the process, we certainly need input from citizens. Some citizens, you know, may not even know about it, and how we alert them and continue to keep them updated on this, certainly, I'm open to suggestions on that, but that's kind of where we are in this budget. Water and sewer side, huge budget for us. Frankly, as Mr. Pass will tell you, we're going to be dependent on state regulations going forward in terms of the impact it might have in reference to utilities and water and sewer. So that's another factor we'll be just dealing with over the next, the next three years, I'm sure.
Any other council comments regarding the two items?
I'd like to make a couple of comments myself to sort of echo Harold's comments. You know, we've had, we've been very fortunate, we've gone over 12 years without a tax increase, and that's due to economic growth and the businesses that Harold alluded to, and our ability to have good development come in and to keep things moving and progressing in the right way, that's unheard of in a budget that's grown the size of our budget during that period of time. You know, furthermore, we heard from New Leaf Society tonight, we've got a project, the animal shelter going on now. Public-private partnerships are really, really important in a community our size, and being able to leverage the relationships that Brad Davis talked about standing up here just a few moments ago, is what gives us the ability to maneuver through those and pull those off. Our staffs to be committed, we're always looking for ways to leverage federal dollars. We talked about a build grant last night that could provide up to $25 million towards a project that we're exploring as we speak. You know, the FTA, the Federal Transit Authority, that's 1.8 million that we leverage, that comes in to allow us to put money with it and provide a service that really has a positive impact both for the community needs and for economic development long-term. And to Harold's point, as we're continuing to grow, we are talking about, you know, perhaps building buildings or adding programs and things like that. The capital cost is easy, but the ongoing upkeep and the staffing is perpetual, that's the thing that keeps going. And then, you know, the last piece is our water and sewer team, it is an enterprise fund, it does dovetail, they cover their expenses, they truly operate at a level that has always been, I've been truly proud of how well that organization's held things together. You know, we're a regional water provider, without being able to provide water originally to Greensboro and to some of the other municipalities, our rates would change drastically. The infrastructure that we have is there, it's already in the ground, we've got to keep it up, and we need to, quite honestly, we need to sell water in order to do that to these other municipalities. But there's industries that will approach a million dollars a year in water rents from us, local companies, not counting their property tax, not counting the sales tax that may or may not be generated off of their goods and services, but just the amount of water that they use. So there's a tax side to it, and then there's a fee side on the enterprise fund of water and sewer. But to Harold's point, as the economy grows, we tend to try to grow with it to be sure we're providing resources that we've always sort of had on that wish list of things that we need to do, or the things that you say, when we get enough money, we've got to do that. There's lots of things that we've got to continue to do to take care of what we have. We've got to consistently be mindful that as that revenue stream slows down a little bit, we're going to have to slow down a little bit with it. We've been very fortunate, had good fiscal management, nothing in my eyes tell me that it's going to be any different moving forward. So that's the challenge that we have, and very fortunate to have the legislators that we have. If we need money for a project and we go out and start asking around, we generally find a little bit to add to it. Those individuals are very, very mindful of how fragile a municipality can be when big projects are before us, and some of which they mandate. So it's all a relationship-based, cognitively driven, disciplined approach that we must be mindful of every day.
Thank you. Any other council comments, questions, or do I hear a motion?
I would just like to follow up on something that Harold said about engaging the public and having people ask us questions about some of the things that we're thinking about doing, like the police building and like a Western Rec Center and Renewing Maple Avenue and those kinds of things. I'd really like to hear what people have to say about that, and I suspect that they don't know a whole lot about it, and the best way to find out would be to talk to one of us and become engaged in the conversation about it. So particularly like that thought, that we need to hear what people have to say about it. Follow us along as we go through this process.
Anything else from council? Do I hear a motion regarding the two items?
I move that we adopt the budget for 2019-20, including the proposed inspection fees and water and sewer rates, and adopt the grant project ordinance for the 2019-20-20 Community Development Program.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to adopt both the 2019-20-20 fiscal year budget ordinance, including the inspection fees and water and sewer rates, and the grant project ordinance for the 2019-20-20 Community Development Program? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is passed. Appreciate everyone being here to participate in our budget discussion. At this time, we move to item two. Public hearing has been set to consider an application to rezoning from R15, residential district, you can see our conditional residential district for the use of a church for future phased expansions. The property is located at 1230 St. Mark's Church Road, referenced as Allenant's County tax identification numbers 106999, 106994, 107065, 107067, 107069, 107073, 107068, 107071, and 107070. At this time, we recognize Director of Transportation interim Director of Community Development, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor.
Mayor, before we get started, I do want to bring to the council and to the public's attention that I do attend St. Mark's Church, that is the item that's before us, there is not a conflict of interest regarding any of the activities that were going to be discussed tonight, but I did want to make that call.
Thank you for your question. Mike, it's my question.
Now, you do have a four-year request, it is on property, it's going to carry it 1230 St. Mark's Church Road from residential district to a conditional residential district. The map in front of you displays that, the corner here is on actually both sides of the road, it's down to St. Mark's Church Road, as you see, there's this area, this is used for parking and an athletic field at this time, the rest of the campus is on the other side of the street. Also noted, Willow Oak Drive through the middle. I'm going to switch over to the Google Earth map, wouldn't always come back to this if we have any questions about the project, to give you a little clue. So zoom out, I mentioned St. Mark's Church Road, this is Church Street, intersection is just approved by NC DOT, or is underway with DOT for improvements at Williamson. Of course, you have to understand down in this area, there'll be tail development. I don't want to get out of heart, so I'll go to the closing part. This request is to allow a two-phase expansion of St. Mark's Road, St. Mark's Church, excuse me. The first phase will include the existing parking, an entry plaza, a new lobby, and an education building, and a multi-use path along Pedestrian, as indicated on the site plan. What you see in the orange, or the brown, it's on rich brown, is phase one. I want to point to the parking expansion at the top here, the entry plaza, the new lobby area, the new education area, and then I mentioned the multi-use path which connects to an existing path at this point along the frontage of the property on Pedestrian. That's phase one. Phase two may include, and I'll come back to that as well, may include abandonment of the lightaway on Willow Oak Drive between Garden Road and Pedestrian. Willow Oak Drive will be open to the public, but will be maintained by the church. The request at this amount will be in a separate public hearing, but we'll see the council in a separate quest, so it may be done as phase two. Phase two is what you see in the blue, will also include a new building and more parking expansion in order to remove the parking on the west side of St. Mark's Church Road, as indicated on the site plan as well. As you know, currently, the existing park is here, the athletic field here, so that will be removed in phase two, remove campus across the street, you see the new building expansion here, parking expansion down in this area, and amenity here, that's a campus walkway with landscape accents, and then an educational playground expansion, so that's phase two of that. Project gets received approval from the Technical Review Committee, and on April 22nd of 2019, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend a rezoning request. The comprehensive land use plan calls for this area to be suburban residential. The church is allowed within that classification by special use permit or conditional zoning. Staff recommends approval of the conditional rezoning request with the attached conditions. I'll also mention that they have two nerve group meetings, I'll allow the applicant to explain those tonight. Mr. Stephen Troutman is here to present the application, and of course, we'll be glad to answer any questions afterwards. Is this good enough for you?
It's good, it's good. Give it here, there, is it? Either one of them. Thanks, Mike, and thanks to the council for your time. Stephen, I'm Stephen Troutman with the Clip Studio, Architect on Project, also here with our team, John Turner with St. Mark's Church, and Joe Bryant is the civil engineer on the projects. Just to kind of walk you through a little bit about our improvements for phase one and phase two, we've worked with city planning and zoning as well with this, but Mike mentioned phase, phase one essentially has two building additions. The church, church had a couple of goals for us in this first phase to address, and the first one, we really wanted to kind of expand front door, make that a little more of an obvious welcoming entry to the church, come on the east side, for Willow Oak Drive. The current entry is a much smaller, kind of best to be able to attend, the two buildings kind of a freeways style entrance, so with our, first, it's a single-story new lobby kind of in the very center of campus there, along with that, we would also propose to include... Along with that, we would also propose to include a kind of plaza, which is sort of underneath that larger orange block, which is kind of a little bit of organic form there. There would be some outdoor gathering space, that was shade trees, just kind of, again, kind of make that a little more of an obvious front door, welcoming front door, and some rework of that existing parking area, as well as the rest of that kind of orange block highlights. And the second building addition is kind of around south there, southeast corner of the building, that would focus on the children's programming, was the second kind of major component of the project. So we would allow to have a couple of classrooms in that expansion as well as a children's large group space for their worship services, their worship meetings together. And it's also helping us, we're doing a larger renovation of the first-floor existing classroom lane that will kind of tie in with our new lobby, allow for kids to check in, it's just a little more welcoming for first-time families and kind of helping that whole first story flow together. Along with that, we're proposing to install, as Mike mentioned, the Peeler Street multi-use pad. You can kind of see that dashed orange line. It would connect to the existing path that goes from Peeler up to Garden. So we would kind of be adding another segment toward Joe C. Davidson as part of our first phase. So Joe Bryant's plans have that detailed. We've sent in the TRC approval. And then we've also shown, the last piece for phase one would be two proposed parking expansions, kind of right off Garden at the north end of the property. So with that, we're proposing to be able to pave within a portion of the setbacks. We would again submit fully developed civil plans for TRC approval, but our proposal and the development conditions is stating that we wouldn't pave any closer to Willow Oak Drive and the adjacent existing lots on those sides there to the south. Some phase two, Mike kind of mentioned these, but the building expansion portion would be right there in the center. The church would like to look at potentially some larger upper elementary youth classroom areas, also focusing potentially on some community program elements. We talked a little bit about potential gym space. We definitely would kind of reprogram once we get toward phase two with the church. And then along with that, on the west side of St. Mark's Church Road, you're seeing the multi-use path to be added in phase two for that stretch of the property. For parking in phase two, we've shown a block at the southeast side of the property there at Peeler and Willow Oak. That's currently existing as a gravel parking lot. Again, pending fully developed civil TRC plans, we propose to pave that and also expand parking on the other side of Willow Oak. This would all include landscape buffers between those and Peeler Street, so that there's no, just kind of see a parking there across Peeler. And we would make sure to maintain landscape buffers around all perimeters there. But that would, the essential goal with that would be to allow the church to transition the larger portion of this campus onto the east side of St. Mark's, so they kind of get a fully centralized campus feel with that main entry into the first-phase lobby. And then as Mike mentioned, showing a kind of diagonal pedestrian walkway there across Willow Oak. What we've worked a little bit through with planning and zoning is a potential design concept to provide some landscape accents and some pavers crossing at Willow Oak, so it's kind of got a little more of that, you know, good pedestrian thoroughfare type feel to it. So what we would need with that in order to add landscaping and some of the elements that flows is to have the potential abandonment to a private right-of-way for St. Mark's. We don't propose, if this were to be pursued by St. Mark's, we don't propose any width reductions or access changes to the road. Simply be kind of a right-of-way transfer that would allow them to maintain that road privately and do those landscape accents. But again, we are proposing that would only be considered as a phase two lobby. I believe that's the plan that we've kind of developed, breaking down my phase. There's any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Travman. Any questions from counsel? I do have one item more towards staff, recognizing that the UDO is coming up for approval hopefully this summer. Have they been provided with recommendations to try to bring this in alignment with some of the UDO considerations?
We'll discuss that today, but the only thing that we identified that may be different would be signage.
Okay. All right. Otherwise, it'll be generally conforming to the new.
In general.
Excellent. Okay. Any other questions from counsel? Thank you. You'll have an opportunity after comments to answer any questions from this hearing. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak regarding this topic. Anyone on this side of the room? Do I hear a motion from counsel to close public hearing?
No. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Do I hear any further questions, comments from counsel, or do I hear a motion regarding this item? Counsel has been provided with suggested verbiage for consistency and inconsistency statements regarding the movement on the blue sheets that you may see them referred to.
I just have a comment that I'm really pleased to see this in phase two abandoning that west campus parking because that seems to be a safety issue for people going to church down. That looks like a really good idea and it's a very nice way.
All the counsel, quick, please comment. Do I hear a motion regarding this item?
I move that we approve this request to rezonate from R-15 residential district to CR conditional district. The property is located at 1230 St. Mark's Church Road and referenced as Alaman's County Tax Parcel Identification Numbers.
That's spelled out.
10699, spelled out in the agenda. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in section four of land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to have traditional residential and suburban residential uses. The request is in a zoning district that allows religious institutions by special use permit or through conditional zoning. The development incorporates requirements identified in both the greenways and lightways plan, map 3.4A Comprehensive Network Northwest Burlington, and the pedestrian master plan, map 3.4 pedestrian network recommendation map, Southwest Grid. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential uses in the area and this use was approved by a special use permit in 2000, making it a compatible use in the area. The request is compatible with the existing zoning in the area and connections will be made to the existing pedestrian greenways network.
Do I hear a second to that? Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed. Mr. Travman, Mr. Turner, Mr. Bryant, we appreciate you being here this evening. We look forward to the project.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Tom.
Moves us to item three. Under new business, city council will consider temporarily closing the following streets on Saturday, September 14, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. until close noon during the annual Walk to End Alzheimer's fundraiser contingent upon meeting the requirements in the special events application. The streets to be closed are East Front Street from South Spring Street to South Worth Street and South Main Street from East Front Street to Davis Street. This time, we recognize event organizer Kimberly Ledger.
Thank you. Happy to be here. So good evening, Mayor Altis and city council. Good evening. The Alzheimer's Association is planning to host our annual Walk to End Alzheimer's fundraiser through the streets of downtown Burlington on Saturday, September 14. The walk is scheduled to begin at 10:00 in the morning at the Historic Training Depot. The walk will utilize Main Street from the Historic Depot in downtown Burlington down to the intersection of Main and Pritchard Street at the YMCA and then turn to return to the Historic Depot. As Maribel Tudes mentioned, we are requesting to close the following streets in downtown Burlington from 9:00 a.m. until noon. East Front Street from South Spring Street to South Worth Street and South Main Street from East Front Street to Davis.
Any questions regarding this request? Do I hear a motion from counsel?
I'd make a motion that we approve the request to temporarily close the street contingent upon meeting all requirements and the special events application process.
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you. We look forward to your event this fall. Item four, under new business, city council will consider approving the Community Development Program 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan. This time, we recognize Community Development Administrator, Sinead Brandl.
Good evening, mayor and counsel. The planning department does ask that the city council consider approving the program year 2019-2020, one-year action plan of the CDVG program. In your packets, you were given a spreadsheet that detailed the annual action plan budget as well as a budget summary, program summary sheet of all the plans and projects that will be occurring during the 1920 fiscal year. I do want to bring your attention to two or actually three things in the actual request. So there was a difference between the estimated and our final amount. So we did receive our final allocation amount a couple of days before we came for our public hearing initially. And so that increased allocation amount, that final allocation amount was $465,963. This was an increase of $66,321 versus what we had estimated versus what our final allocation amount was. We also ran under budget from a previous fiscal year program. We ran under budget by approximately $21,000. So we have allocated or reallocated that $21,000 to a project in the 1920 fiscal year. And we reallocated that $21,000 and the $66,000 to three different programs. We reallocated approximately $5,000 to administration, approximately $22,000. We spread that over our public service requests that were received from nonprofits. One public service recipient did not actually turn in their audited financial statement by the deadline that was imposed on them. So we reallocated that nonprofits to the other nonprofits. So that increased their amounts as well. And then we had approximately $60,000 that was allocated to Public Facilities Infrastructure Project, which is on the Bond Street side lot project. So those were the three main reallocation amounts that we had in the 1920 Annual Action Plan. I do also want you to note, and I think that our city manager actually noted this as well from his presentation, is that we don't have our final home allocation amounts yet. Once we do receive those, we'll have to come back and do a budget amendment.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel regarding this item?
Where's the Bond Street?
Bond Street is, the whole entire street of Bond Street is over in East Burlington.
It's actually from Beaumont to Altus Church Street. It's a section just west of the Department of Services and.
Oh, at Bond.
Yeah, Bond.
I'm sorry.
That's a connection from the transit shelter to the Department of Services. Any other questions? Do I hear a motion regarding this item?
I move that we approve the 1920, 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan for Community Development Program.
Do I hear a second? Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you. That completes our regular agenda. We had no public comments on that prior to the meeting. At this time, are there any city council comments?
Harold just had one comment. I would like to, when I was a special guest that slipped in on this to my ear, pull up former mayor Ronnie Wallen, who missed us so much he had to sit on those.
Exactly.
It's good to see you, man.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Who just received a special award from the North Carolina League of Municipalities just a couple of weeks ago. Lifetime achievement membership.
Congratulations.
You're a legend in East Burlington. Meadowwood too. Meadowwood too. Roads are paved up to his house.
That's what you get for retirement.
Any other comments? Couple of quick announcements. Folks may have noticed down at City Park, there's some commotion going on around the carousel. The folks from Carousel and Carvings are in town working to disassemble the carousel prior to its full restoration. I love the folks down there, did the rest of the week as they continue to pack that carousel up to bring it up to Mary Island for the coming months and years and finish that full restoration and improvement so that folks can continue to enjoy that for generations to come. As mentioned, there's a couple of events going around Link Transit this week since it is our anniversary of that event. Until the 7th, fares will be free on Link Transit. We encourage folks to get out, try out the system, check out where it'll take you around the community and get to meet some of the other fellow riders on that system. On the 6th, the birthday for Link Transit will have a number of rider events and special birthday gig at the Transit Hub. Folks are encouraged to get to come out and celebrate with a special announcement regarding expansion of service on the system. We recently added another stop on the orange line near the Salvation Army Boys and Girls Club in response to the movement of the food pantry to that facility. And that's helping folks who need to access that food pantry be able to access it more readily by bringing that transit closer to the services there. And then our adoption center undergoing renovations is currently promoting, the summer is cooler with pets. My wife and I agree with that. You can adopt any cat or dog for $20. And then as Christopher Tate mentioned at the beginning, we encourage all folks to go out and check out the Amateur Radio Field Day, June 22nd at 2:00 p.m. until June 23rd at 2:00 p.m. My wife and I have had the opportunity to go the last couple of years and it's truly impressive, the scale of the folks there and what they're able to do and who they're talking to around the country and around the world. And as Christopher mentioned, you can try your hand, they're happy to show you how they do it. And it's really fun, so we encourage you all to stop by and check it out. And again, that's over at the Police and Fire Training Facility.
One quick comment is I serve on the Salvation Army five people. We serve on the heck, but we certainly appreciate some new thoughts. We know that that will benefit many.
We appreciate the Salvation Army stepping up to fill that need in the community. We know it was not easy to shoe an equipment for that facility.
Yeah, we do. To restore that, it took some doing.
Any other counsel comments?
I'd just like to make one comment to the former mayor. And I'm sure Mr. Kirkland will appreciate this. All the years we talked about public transportation, there was one number we always talked about. Mr. Mayor, it was 419,000. We're still under 419,000. So I had to tell you that so that you could keep our word.
That's with expanding services.
That's with expanding services.
Which, by the way, I meant to mention this last night, at our park board trustees meetings, there are parts expanding our Route Four services. We didn't, I failed to mention that last night, but for our parking lot lots through Alaman's County and then as it heads on east to Chapel Hill, there's going to be some expanded service routes and round times. Very busy.
Just one thing, Cheryl Brown, our information director is here this evening and this will be, she's in her final week serving as our information director. I thought it'd be a great time to express our appreciation and thanks to Cheryl. She's done a wonderful, wonderful job in helping us over the last four months or so in human resources and provided a steady hand and wonderful advice all along the way. So obviously, other departments nodding in agreement. So thank you, Cheryl. I appreciate your service.
Any further comments? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, please say aye. Thank you, Urban, for coming this evening.